All right, I'm going to call this meeting to order. Today is October 10th, 2019. It is 2:00 PM. And this is a meeting of the Board of Trustees, Weatherford College. And this is the Aline Strain Community Room of the Doss Student Center located at 225 College Park Drive, Weatherford, Parker County, Texas. And we're here to meet on the agenda that is posted, to consider and act on that agenda. First item is called to order. I've done that. I'll ask Mr. Baker to conduct our invocation.
Yes, sir. Please bow with me. Lord, again, we're very thankful today for all the great things you are doing for Weatherford College. We know those all come from you. Thank you for all the students. Thank you for the blessings you've given us this year, for all the volunteers, our board members, our faculty and staff. We pray that you will protect them and all of us as we finish out the rest of this year. And we thank you for the wonderful things you're doing with our students here. Help us to be a vessel for you this year and as long as we're here. Thank you for our board and please be with them as they deliberate today. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
Stand with me and we'll say the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the free republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Be seated. And we do have a forum present. Ms. Worley, open forum for individuals not on the agenda.
We have none.
Thank you, ma'am. Number three, President's Report, President Farmer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman and members of the Weatherford College Board of Trustees, I would like to give a few brief recognitions and employment notifications. Recognizations. Congratulations to the Weatherford College Board of Trustees, the Weatherford College Foundation Board, faculty, staff, students, and all of our community stakeholders for Weatherford College being awarded the 2019 Large Business of the Year Award by the Weatherford Chamber of Commerce. Mr. Chairman, it is now both my pleasure and honor to present you and the entire Board of Trustees with this distinguished award. Thank you for your highly effective governance of Weatherford College.
Well, thank you so much. Actually, this award goes to not only the Board of Trustees but to the entire college. I mean, that's wonderful. And on behalf of the Board and on behalf of the college, I accept this from our wonderful leader. And thank you so much. Anybody have anything to say?
Just, we're proud. We're really proud.
Want me to keep this up here?
Yes, sir. Thank you. And we'll proudly display that after the meeting.
Thank you, sir. Continue.
Last month, we recognized Gwen Crabtree and the entire staff of the Weatherford College Testing Center for their recent recertification by the National College Testing Association. Gwen is here today. Gwen, would you and Rhonda and any of your team members from the testing center please stand so that we can give you a round of applause?
That's the way to term stuff.
We appreciate all of the quality work that you and your team do for our students. Thank you. Congratulations are also in order for the Weatherford College Foundation Board member, Lana Leach. Lana received the James H. Doss Award at the recent Weatherford Chamber of Commerce banquet. Lana is a true asset to Weatherford College and our entire community. Congratulations, Lana. Congratulations are also in order to Merlin Coleman on being awarded the 2019 Presidential Service Award at the recent Presidential Luncheon. Merlin is in her 50th year of service at Weatherford College. She is an amazing person with an amazing record of service. Weatherford College rodeo student Cody Haas recently set a college record for goat tying at the Vernon College Rodeo. She was one of 10 WCT members to qualify for the finals. Congratulations on setting a Weatherford College record, Cody. Coyote baseball players Hunter Rosson, Brandon Hughes, John Bro, Bryce Haggott were recently selected for the All-Star Baseball Weekend Games. Congratulations, guys, and go Coyotes. The recent 2019 Weatherford College Foundation Golf Tournament was a huge success. A record number of 32 teams participated in the event. Foundation President Bob Glenn, who's here with us today, Executive Director Brent Baker, and the entire Foundation Board continue to do an exceptional job of raising money for our students. So, thank you, Bob, and thank you to everyone on the Weatherford College Foundation Board. And finally, recognition is in order for our Bell Ringers Ball Planning Committee. Donna Dickinson, Lana Leach, Judy McAnally, Charlotte LaGrone, Tammy Gazola, Katie Edwards, Evelyn Payne, Stephanie Fields, and Brent Baker have planned what will undoubtedly be a night to remember. We are eagerly looking forward to this event on November 9th at Ridgely Country Club. Employee notices. DMAC Local requires the college president to provide the names of contract employees that have resigned since the last board meeting. In accordance with this policy, the following individuals have submitted resignations. Danis Masters, a student records verification specialist from enrollment management, has announced her retirement. It was effective 9/30/19. We thank Danis for her service and wish her well in future endeavors. Mr. Chairman, that concludes the President's Report.
Thank you, Dr. Farmer. Number four is the consent agenda. All of that information has been posted. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
That's so good.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If that item's approved. Number five, consideration possible action concerning DEB Local Policy Update. Mr. Adam Finley.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Within your board packet, you'll find Policy DEB Local. This policy addresses employee benefits with the institution. It allows the employees in the campus to attend tuition-free.
Say that again.
Tuition-free. What if your college administration would like to recommend that that be extended and include compulsory fees and waiving any additional compulsory fees that would be charged?
Thank you. Is there a motion to?
I have a question.
Oh, okay.
That's going to include the additional fee that we approved at the last board meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
Right? That's compulsory. Okay. That's the way I understood it, but I wanted to be sure.
That is correct.
Anybody else?
No, God, that's it.
Satisfied?
Yeah.
Is there a motion concerning DEB Local Policy Update by Mr. Finley?
I don't know.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's approved. Reports. First report would be Weatherford College Foundation Annual Report. Mr. Baker.
Thank you, trustees. I'm going to spend just a few minutes talking about the Weatherford College Foundation. As you know, every year, I come to you and give you a report on the activities of the foundation. And what an incredible year it's been for this foundation. Very special time for us. I'd like to introduce a couple of very special people. First of all, my executive assistant Evelyn Payne is right here, and she does a tremendous job for our foundation. And the President of the Weatherford College Foundation, Mr. Bob Glenn, right here. Would y'all recognize him? Well, just a reminder that our foundation is led by a board of 25 individuals. Up on the screen there, I have the Executive Committee, which is probably the most active of those individuals as far as the time we ask of them, led by Bob. They do a tremendous job and work through issues throughout the year with me. And then our rest of our board is listed there. We do have Lila Morris, who is now our liaison between the Foundation Board and the Board of Trustees, and President Farmer as well. President Farmer and Lila are ex-official members of the board. But this board, I see this board as a who's who of our service area, and we're very fortunate to have these individuals working with us. Talk a little bit about the growth of the foundation. We just, as you know, finished our fiscal year in August 31st, and for the first time in history, the net assets of the Weatherford College Foundation crossed the $9 million mark, $9.3 million. We've had tremendous growth over the last five years, and we're ready to celebrate $10 million at some point in the near future. Looking forward to that. Contributions. What an incredible year we had this past fiscal. We went from $253,000 in contributions to the foundation to $592,000 in contributions. And, you know, I think most of the credit to that goes to our donors. We have some very generous donors that just love this college. But also, the Sesquicentennial has really kick-started our program. The leadership of President Farmer has been tremendous for our foundation. And Bob Glenn, who's been a tremendous president of our foundation, we'll talk more about him here in just a moment. Scholarships. It's our bread and butter. This last academic year, we gave $281,000 in scholarships. And if you include our contribution to Project Opportunity, which comes back to us in scholarships, we actually gave $290,000 in scholarships, and that is a record for our college. Those are lives being changed right there. Try not to think of them as dollars, or try to think of them as people and as our students. This is the last five years of scholarships, a really nice increase right there. We're looking forward to breaking the $300,000 mark hopefully this year. And if you look at it on a five-year increment, going back to 2003, '04, from $83,000 to 141,000, 183,000, and now 290,000, a lot of students are being helped through the generosity of our donors. So, thank you again to those folks. Now, since May 1st of this year, we've had 10 new scholarship endowments added to our foundation. What that means is a minimum of $10,000 given and a permanent scholarship endowment in all of these folks' names. Now, what do these 10 individuals and couples have in common besides they care about our students, besides they're very generous? Thing they have in common is this guy right here in the middle, Bob Glenn. Bob Glenn, I call him the machine. He is an incredible fundraiser, and as I've told you previously, since May, he has been volunteering with us several days a week to raise funds. And he is a, he's amazing. He's an amazing fundraiser and how he cares about this college and the students. That picture there is from our last Foundation Board meeting when President Farmer presented him with a Presidential Core Value coin, only the second ever given by this college. So, Bob, thank you again for all you're doing for our students. We appreciate you. This has been a fun project. If you'll go back to that Steinway back there, Teresa, thank you. And this is a video of a piano being delivered to the college last week. And this is the first new grand piano from the, I'm just going to talk and walk, from the Steinway campaign. This is a seven-foot Steinway B delivered last week. Right there. Can you click on that? This was a, this includes Spirit R technology, which is player piano technology. And thanks to the generosity of Richard and Nancy Stewart, who provided this piano. When we started this campaign less than a year ago, we had one Steinway grand piano for our fine art students. By the end of this year, we'll have 11 either Steinway or Steinway-designed pianos for our fine art students. Not only is this bringing the finest equipment to those students, but we really think it's elevating the entire college's visibility as well. And so, I want to thank everyone who's been a part of that. We'll have some more announcements about that to come. But another thing that's important to note about the Steinway program is that we've raised $390,000 in gifts and pledges for this program. And about 28,000 of that was from our own employees. So, employees from across the institution decided to make a donation and to try to make a difference in that program as well. So, we're thankful to them as well. Okay, the Bell Ringers Ball, President Farmer mentioned this. We're working very hard on this right now. It is kind of the capstone event of the Sesquicentennial year, and we hope you're all there, I mean, everyone in the room, all there, and that you'll invite others. And if you're on social media, if you will talk it up and share it. Duane Duret's done a great job in pulling together musicians for the event, and a lot of fun surprises as well. So, as he said, that's at the Ridgely Country Club on Saturday, November the 9th. I don't have time to talk about all the other activities like donations for landscaping and the Pretty Foundation in Wise County and the Coyote Chase Race and the golf tournament, all the things happening. But thank you for your support. And do you have any questions about the foundation? Lila.
How do you determine how many scholarships you give out?
We determine how many scholarships that we give each year according to how much money is available. So, each fund, depending on the market, depending on how they did that year, that's how much scholarship money we give.
Anything else? Thank you, Mr. Baker.
Thank you.
Mr. Andy, you've got three items. Start with B.
Thank you.
Guided Pathways.
I'm going to move through these pretty quickly. You'll have, from Teresa, the data under our reporting available to you and a copy of this presentation. So, I'm just going to hit the highlights if you don't mind.
Thank you.
First thing, for our Pathways Project, we just completed our survey for the Pre-Institute. We're beginning the second round of the Pathways Institutes in San Antonio in November. And we had 121 respondents from the college body, the college community. The two overwhelming ideas that they gave us. First, we need to make sure we're making changes with our Pathways Project that lead to significant and measurable improvements. We're doing a lot of things, but folks have told us between all of our meetings and everything that we're doing, they aren't always clear on what we're doing. And so, we're also going to work on communicating pathways with the college. So, those are our two major goals, and you can see some things we're going to do to accomplish that. The main thing I'd like you to notice is that we're going to take our leadership team to a focus group that are going to participate continuously in what we do. And they're going to facilitate, rather than lead, all of the many task forces that we're going to have that are involved in specific activities. And those task forces will have agendas, timelines, and deliverables identified. We found that, as you probably know, longstanding committees tend to be self-perpetuating in their activities, but they don't tend to be as productive as focused task forces. So, we're going to give that a try. We're inviting participation in our task forces from across the college, including you. And we're going to have our leadership team members facilitate rather than directing those work groups. So, if you find somebody with an idea about something we could do to improve student success, we're trying to break that down to small groups of people who are actively engaged in making changes. For our Institute One, we're going to take 14 individuals, including Dr. Farmer, going to come to that institute. He's going to the Pre-Institute. A number of us are going to a session on eight-week courses, moving to eight-week courses. That's a trend that's happening nationwide, and it's showing tremendous positive student success. So, we're going to look at that for Weatherford College. We're also going to attend some sessions on communication. The team will present its findings when it gets back. We're going to have a post-conference meeting where we're all going to talk about what we did. All of the team members are going to have agendas before they go and identifying the sessions they're going to attend to make sure we cover everything that is meaningful to our college. And then, we're going to present findings to you from that institute session during the January board meeting. I think it's important because our survey tells us that not everyone was aware. We got generally positive comments on the surveys. People generally agreed that they knew about it, what Pathways was, all of that, but it wasn't as uniform and as positive as we would have liked. It tells us there's room to grow. So, we're going to work on those elements. But this is an opportunity for us to show you just some of the things that we've done already under Dr. Cantrell's leadership in our Pathways Project. I've highlighted two items here. We started with creating and revising the Pathways models. That's where most people thought Pathways began, was curriculum alignment. And we did that. We're still working on those revisions. And then, I'd like to draw your eye to the bottom of the list. All the stuff in the middle is important to somebody here, students particularly. But at the bottom, Mr. Finley and I, just about a week ago, began looking at opportunities to grant degrees to our non-core completing students. This is completely legal with the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board, for completers who earn 60 credit hours toward transferable programs of study. We haven't been doing that in the past, and we know that's going to contribute directly to more degree completions. That means more people leaving here with our stamp and with that feeling of success. So, that's the Pathways summary. Do you have any questions about Pathways as we're working right now? If not, I'll move on to the demand study information. There are two things we want to highlight. One is we did some work in Weatherford College, Wise County, and then we're going to talk to you about low SES students. For WCWC, we've been looking at the trend there, and we're seeing enrollment decline at the campus with technical programs remaining flat over the past few years. That's a challenge for us. We have to rise to meet. That campus has got to grow its face-to-face population. We've also noticed that our dual-credit population during that same time in Wise County has risen by 70%. But over 30% of those students who attend college after high school graduation attend at Weatherford College. But of those students who attend, the majority of them come to the Weatherford College main campus or take classes online rather than attending at WCWC. And we don't know why. So, we're implementing a study. We're going to talk to the students in Wise County about going to school in Wise County, what's positive for them. We're also going to interview the students here and talk to them about why they're coming here or why they're taking classes online. Because we want to understand what's drawing them there and what might draw them to attend at a location closer, we assume, to their homes. So, we're going to look at that. In addition to this, we're doing some new things in Wise County. We hope people in Wise County are excited about it. We're going to be moving computer-assisted design and drafting classes to the Weatherford College, Wise County campus in the spring of 2020. Because this is an untapped market, we have an idea, anecdotal information about people who could use this in Wise County. But we're going to be going out right now, Kristen McGlocklin is up there. We're going to be marketing this in the Wise County region, and we expect to see that program go. Because they're using some pretty good computers on that program, we also know we can do other things with those computers. And we're looking at reinvigorating our business and basic computer skills classes at WCWC in the spring of 2020 because we can use the same hardware. We have found that we have interest from the criminal justice, public safety market, the correctional system employees that can advance and promote with some basic computer skills, and displaced workers. This is an area of greatest concern to us, displaced workers who need to enhance their job skills in order to be sellable in the marketplace. So, we're going to start working on that, and we plan to have that online for spring 2020. So, we're doing some things to increase our face-to-face population at Weatherford College, Wise County, and we're doing it quickly. For Weatherford College overall, Mr. Butler has recently completed a primary study of low SES students, and we found some interesting information that supports our Pathways notions and numbers with success. You remember, last time we met, I showed you how our students are often financially challenged. But what we know is that about half of our students are in families with incomes below $60,000 a year. Of those students, those in the lowest bracket that we analyzed, $20,000 or below, are one family emergency away from not completing anything. One major financial blow, and those students are probably coming out of college. And those are the students we've got to worry about wrapping in services. But we found this very interesting and sort of promising, and it speaks a lot to the character of our students. For those between $20,000 and $60,000, that's not a lot of money for a family, no matter what size it is. For those students, they're averaging 5% higher in retention and completion than the students both below and above them. I'd like you to think about that. 5% higher on average, in some areas as high as 18% higher in retention and completion than the students who are making $20,000 and below, or in families making $20,000 and below, and in families making $60,000 and above. Many of these students are working, trying to get financial aid to go to school. They're the people receiving these scholarships. And if you want to talk about Pathways success, we ought to look at what they've been doing in the foundation because clearing the hurdles of financial obstacles is the major obstacle for many of our students. These students are, and what it tells us is that while it may take them longer to get through school, completion to these populations is a serious issue. They know the value of higher education. And we want to start looking at them and talking about how we can increase that success rate. Because if that's true in that population, the barriers that get in the way, they're eager to surmount them and surpass them, and we want to support them.
What are the usual unseen expenses? I mean, what's the range on that? Are we talking about hundreds of dollars or?
It can be as few as 50 bucks. The tire blew on my car, and I don't have the money to replace it, and I can't get to school from Fort Worth. And if I miss one week of classes, it can be, I don't have the money to buy that book, and I won't have it for the first six weeks. I'm so far behind in the class, I'm not going to complete the class. And it can be devastating families, you know, somebody gets ill.
There's got to be a way to address that.
There are ways, and we're working on it. And I'm proud to tell you, I don't want to take too much of your time, but Brent Baker and the foundation have been fantastic about providing emergency resources for students. A lot of people don't know this. We go to Brent, and we say, a student has a blown tire. They can't come to school without a tire replacement. And Brent says, I'll get you a credit card, and we'll take care of it. We hear all kinds of stories about you got to fill out 1,800 forms, and you got to promise to pass the class and repay it. I don't remember those conversations. I just remember people saying, what can we do to help? So, we're doing something. This is not a college that is not caring. We're changing our total culture of caring, but the people here, good people doing good things. Do you have any other questions about that?
No.
All right. If you don't mind. Yes, sir.
Well, I don't have a question. I'm just commenting on that middle group. Somehow, they're seeing the light at the end of the tunnel where those below that income level haven't been able to see the route or the light or the way. And it might be interesting to pursue that opportunity. Maybe they just haven't had the opportunity to see the route or the opportunity below that. And those above have a lot of opportunities to choose from.
Exactly, Dr. Moore. We think that's it.
Anyway, so, that's just a comment.
We also are concerned that maybe some below actually do see the value, but they don't have enough of a net that if they get one tear in one strand, they fall through it. And we need to look at them and say, how do we make that one crisis in your life not the one that takes you out of college?
I think they see it, but they don't see the route.
No, exactly, sir.
And so, anyway.
How does the word get out to the students? I mean, how does that student sitting in that class with all this in their head know who to go to to ask for help?
Well, again, I'm sorry we're carrying on, but
That's okay.
We're doing some things. We have the Wall of Kindness over in the academic building where people are posting notes about, with the names of people who help people. We think that's one way. It's grassroots. Our upward-bound students this past weekend went around to the restroom facilities in our college, to the backs of stalls. Because if somebody's in crisis, where can they go and be alone and gather themselves? Restrooms. So, on the backs of the stall doors, we placed panels with emergency contact information for all of the resources that might be necessary for a student. So, when you're sitting there, it's right there in front of you.
That's great.
And we're doing things to try to reach out to students in very public ways, but unfortunately, people in crisis tend not to want to be seen. So, we've got to find ways to reach out to them that don't invade that privacy and make our trying to help them public exposure of an already critical moment in their lives. But thank you for asking that. Are there other questions about Pathways or our demand study efforts?
Are there any efforts to make job opportunities in the area?
For those students?
Yes.
Absolutely. They're fantastic opportunities. That's what these folks back here do. They connect our workforce education programs with Texas Workforce Solutions. They actually have an office on our campus. And our efforts with our new workforce education initiatives will connect them even better.
I'm just talking about something maybe a little less informal. I know I need occasionally somebody to work on my place. There's a lot of people in my neighbors saying, well, I wish I had somebody to come out and spend, you know, 20 hours. I just wonder
Yes.
...how much we... I just wonder how much we, we communicate with the overall community about possibilities that somebody who may not be able to come up with a lot of money for jobs, but they would help students in short, you know, these short-term jobs. I don't, I don't know.
That's a fantastic question, and we do something about it. We report that through Adam Finley's office and the Student Life Office. We usually hang up a sign on a bulletin board in the students' areas that say, so-and-so is looking for someone. At this rate, please contact this person at this phone number. And we try to connect our students through personal interviews. We know often which students are struggling, and we're out there trying to get them jobs. In fact, we're hosting a job fair, I believe, for Dicky's Arena next week, the 19th of October. That new arena in downtown Fort Worth is looking for employees. We're hoping, hosting a job fair here at the Weatherford College, Weatherford Campus to try to get people connected to all sorts of jobs. So if you come up with something like that, you know someone who can hire a student or hire someone who comes through our environment, we'd be glad to know that information and share it with our students.
Well, y'all do a good job and all that. There's no problem. My question really is, is how do we get information out to average citizens that this is? You know, I've never received anything, never seen anything in the newspaper, I've never received anything that says, Weatherford College would like them, you know, or we're looking for our students' part-time employment at various times. Anything that would, that would, do we do any outreach to generate that employment? I just want, just curious.
We do job fairs at Weatherford College, Weatherford Campus, under Weatherford College, Wise County. We also do resume-building activities at Weatherford College, Wise County.
I know you do those things, and that's wonderful. But I'm talking about just the average, just communicating with the public in general. They don't ever go to a job fair or do anything like that. You know, I mean, a large percentage of them that have little jobs that they might do. I don't know how you would do that. I'm not...
Let me put that on the agenda of Kristen McGlocklin at Weatherford College, Wise County as our workforce coordinator, and see what we can put together.
Well, if you think it might have some promise, I don't know.
There's no such thing as the big tree with a bunch of fruit hanging on it we've missed. Everything from here out is low, is, is reach and find. And if it gets a couple of people a job, it's worth it for us. So we'll be glad to talk with Kristen about that and see if we can't do something to move that forward.
Great idea. Thank you.
Anything else?
How about Vet Tech?
Absolutely. So I've highlighted a few things here for you. They are the ones involving money. We're moving forward. We have our budget ready to develop. We're gonna have a planning meeting next week over physical plant preparations and getting ready so we can meet AVMA standards. That will require some expenditures. We obviously are gonna build the budget in spring 2020. We're going to have to hire an additional vet tech to serve as a program instructor. That will happen in early to mid-spring 2020. And we're going to have to acquire the imaging equipment, that's the radiology unit, required for the program to be installed at the Weatherford and Parker County Animal Shelter. Those are the major big-ticket items along the way. We have the marketing plan, and we have making sure the curriculum's completely aligned. We're putting this material in the catalog, all of those things, so we can begin classes in fall of 2020. Any questions?
Good job, Mr. Andy. Thank you for all three reports. Mr. Finley, you're up. Access and affordability report.
Yes, sir. Well, within your fourth packet, you'll find access and affordability. Per policy, DI legal. We are required to present this information to the Board of Trustees before November 1st each year. The report includes information on average tuition and fees for 30 semester college hours at Weatherford, criteria used to admit students, median family income by region, criteria for awarding financial aid, and enrollment data for students at Weatherford College. One statistic I would like to point out, on the last chart there identifying ethnicity, the Hispanic-Latino population has increased more so, and that's a trend that we saw from last year as well. Be happy to answer any questions.
Well, I always like to look at the gender breakdown, and it's, it's amazing. Got to pat all these ladies on the back that are coming to Weatherford College. I just think that's wonderful. Wish we could get more of these men to come, too. Thank you, though.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions? Thank you very much. We'll move to future agenda items or meetings. Dr. Farmer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next month, we will bring you the Equities and Athletics Report, and we'll be reporting back on the Guided Pathways Conference. I would like to explicitly state that I have full support of our Guided Pathways Initiative and our Culture of Caring Initiative, and I'm extremely proud of our leadership and the entire team and the progress that they've made. As was earlier stated, we have good people doing good work.
That it?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Announcements, Mr. Baker?
Yes, sir. Lots of upcoming events for you. I'm not gonna read every one of them, but I will tell you, we have an exciting event we've not had before, our Alumni Rodeo and Reunion for both rodeo and ag, coming up October the 19th at the Parker County Sheriff's Posse grounds. They're putting together a great program, wonderful meal, great music from our alumni, and some of the best rodeo talent you'll ever see that are coming back to compete yet again. So we'd love to see you guys there at the Parker County Sheriff's Posse, and Johnny Emmons has done a great job with that. We do have a jazz concert, October the 24th, in the Alkec. STEM Mania, October the 25th. Is that fourth graders, Mike?
Yes, sir.
We'll have hundreds of fourth graders here that day, and learning about science and technology and engineering and math. Safe Halloween, speaking of having a lot of kids on campus, nothing beats that one. Chief Stone and the folks at the Police Department put that together, somewhere between 5,000 and 7,000 kids that day, from 6 to 9, always a fun event. We have our, November 3rd, a special event that First United Methodist Church is putting on for us. Of course, that church is very instrumental in the, in the governance of Weatherford College from almost the beginning. And Pastor First United Methodist, thanks to Lila, is putting together a program that day. 4 o'clock will be a lecture by John Vandergriff, talking about the connection of Weatherford College to the Methodist early on, and they'll have a reception for us later that day. So that'll be a really interesting time to learn even more about our college's history. And then flipping the page, of course, we have basketball games starting already, and you see some basketball games on there. We already mentioned the Bellwingers Ball, November the 9th. Let me know if you, if you'd like to get signed up for that. November 11th, this is exciting, our Veterans Day program that Ralph Willingham and Tammy Peters put together is on Veterans Day itself this year. We have a wonderful speaker this year, Colonel Thomas McKenzie, if I get the name right, who is a WC alumnus, a highly decorated colonel in the US Army and a surgeon. But at 10:45, we're going to have a flyover of four F-16s on this campus to start off our Veterans Day, thanks to Ralph and making that happen through Naval Air Station in Fort Worth. We'll have a flyover of four F-16s. Very, very fun. And Senator Pat Fallon will be there as well, speaking at that event, too. So that's gonna be great. November the 11th, and our Coyote Chase Race, November the 16th. This year, we'll have more of a carnival feel for the kids as well as part of the sesquicentennial. And that's all.
I think Colonel McKenzie was a police officer here.
He certainly was.
At Weatherford PD in the early 1970s. I remember that.
Really?
He's gone on to, he was very, very accomplished in his area of surgery.
All right. The November 4th Student Art Show, you have any other information about that?
No, sir, other than that is the art from our art students. They'll be presented in the Alkec in Texas Hall, which is the front of the Alkec Center. And there's a reception, and Merlin presents that every year. I don't know, is that Merlin's last art show?
No.
She, she's coming, okay. Well, good, because I thought she was retiring mid-year, so, so I'm glad to hear she's not. And hopefully, we'll have many, many more art shows from our...
I'm not letting Merlin go anywhere. You behave yourself. Stay over there.
Hopefully, we'll have her 60th anniversary party.
Yes.
I probably expect we will.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Baker. We're gonna bring our public session to a close at this time. I'm gonna adjourn the public session, and in two minutes, we'll begin our, our closed session to cover the items on the ninth item on the agenda as posted. Thank you. Okay, we're all assembled, assembled back in here. It's 3:20. I'll call the public session back into order, and we'll move to number 10 on the agenda, consideration, possible action, real property. No, no action is necessary on number 10. Same comment, considering personnel matters under 11. We go to number 12. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Certainly.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned. Thank you.